I'd like to call the city and Muskegon City Commission meeting for March 8, 2011 to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor, or pardon me, Elder George Monroe from Evanston Avenue Baptist Church to lead us in prayer to be followed by the pledge. Elder?
I would say, "Honor, Father, again we thank you for the privilege, Lord, that we can be here, Lord. We thank you for our mayor and our manager and our city commissioners, Lord, that you undertake for them, Lord, and give them the wisdom is on how some of these items come up, Lord. I will give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elder Monroe. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Mayor Warmington?
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request: To approve minutes of a city commission meeting that was held on Tuesday, February 22, 2011. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Purchasing cards, finance. Summary request: The city has used purchasing cards since 1994 as a means to streamline purchasing and vendor payment processes. The state of Michigan recently negotiated its P Card program with Bank of America and is extending the contract to other units of government through the M-I-Deal Joint Purchasing Program. The state program offers substantial benefits over our current arrangement with the third bank. It has higher rebates and a user interface. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to execute documents needed to join the state's P Card program.
Record?
Amendment to the zoning ordinance, medical marijuana facilities, planning economic development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Section 1500 Principal Uses permitted to Article 15 I-2 General Industrial Districts of the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana caregivers to facilities as a principal use permitted in I-2 general industrial districts. Staff recommendation: To approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their February 10 meeting. Application for special license liquor control commission public safety. Summary request: The Muskegon Museum of Art has submitted an application for a special license for beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises for the following events: Reception, April 29, 2011; Gala Dinner, June 11, 2011; and Reception, November 18, 2011. The museum meets all of the requirements for the special license with the exception of the request for spirits. Commission policy dictates that any special license request which includes spirits must be considered and approved by the body. Staff recommendation: Staff has no recommendation. Request from Consumer Energy for easements, engineering. Summary request: Consumers Energy Company is seeking for easements from the city of Muskegon for its Muskegon Cobb number one and number two line relocation projects. The project objective is to relocate five high voltage distribution lines that currently exist in the wetlands area east of Consumers Energy Cobb Generation Plant to a location out of a wetlands area. This is being done to facilitate access, which could reduce the size and duration of the outages should an event in the area damage these lines. Access is currently limited due to changing environmental restrictions. Staff recommendation: None. Liquor license request for Watermark Banquet and Conference Center, 920 Washington. City Clerk. Summary request: The liquor control commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Watermark Banquet and Conference Center, LLC 920 Washington Street, to amend initial forms to enlarge outdoor service area and drop one additional bar permit for a total of three bars. Staff recommendation: Departments are recommending approval with zoning issues to be worked out.
Thank you. Commissioners, if you have heard the consent agenda read, are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. Item D, as in dog.
Item D. Any others? Item E also. Commissioner Shepard?
Item C.
Item C?
C or B?
C. Can't ask. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read minus items C, D, and E.
Support? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Carter to approve the consent agenda as read, less item C, D, and E. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like the record to show that as a representative of Ward Two and all the problems we've had in this particular ward at this time, I would ask that I would vote no, and I would like the record to show that my voting for that whole marijuana extension is not acceptable to me. So let the record show.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. So that we may begin debate, I would move that we approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance as presented regarding medical marijuana facilities.
Okay.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for medical marijuana facilities. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepard?
No.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item D. Who pulled that one off?
I did.
Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the application for the special liquor license request for the Muskegon Museum of Art, but not include the request for spirits for consumption so that we are consistent with our other special liquor license requests.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to approve the application for a special liquor license for the art museum without spirits being allowed to be served. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. The reason I did that is, over the years, and I got to credit the mayor, I think, to bring some awareness to this issue as well, but when we have special liquor licenses, whether it be facilities like the art museum, or the Museum of the Lakeshore, or the Silver Sides, and so on, they're also in competition with people who pay for regular liquor license. And when it's a beer and wine special event, I don't see that as nearly as much direct competition as when you also include spirits. Because now, there's nothing that, you know, you can't get at that special event that you can also get at a tavern, or a restaurant, or a bar. And I just think, as a matter of policy, that's a step I'm not comfortable taking. It's been our longstanding policy not to include spirits on these applications, and I just think we ought to stick to that. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Did you want to add anything, sir?
I would. Just in fairness to the organization, this is one that we have missed again over the last couple of years. I know I was here before you, I think, last month was one. We've since checked all of our records. But to be fair to Ms. Haner and the organization, this is one that I have signed off in the past, not being aware that I've signed off on spirits. So I want to take responsibility for that, so the organization is aware of. Detective Dyke and I have gone through all 108 applications from last year, and it appears that I did not do that in the other, but the two that we've, the one prior to, which was the Rainbow Auction, and now this one. So I want, to be fair to the organization, and again, I'm not making a recommendation, but I have missed this over the course of the past couple of years, as far as allowing spirits.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
So, they've been serving spirits for the years that they've done this.
They have. They have, yes.
So this is not without, this is...
Not without precedence.
Yeah, so this is a policy we have...
This is a my bad. Another one, so, yeah.
We'll get there. You mind if we allow the commission to speak first? Is there any other commissioners that'd like to speak on this? Commissioner was asking.
Just curious how long this particular license has been ongoing. Is this like the other one, that was 20 years, or...
Five, six years, Ms. Haner. I'm trying to recall. We've had some, we've kind of grown, it's been different numbers, and I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head, but maybe Ms. Haner can help us, but...
The Gail is the major fundraiser for the museum. This is the ninth year.
Okay.
Other two are also fundraisers. The first one is the second year, and the third one is the third year, all of which are fundraisers. And about 55% of our funding is from here. All three of these places are fundraisers.
I think, in the past, we took a look at the, what happened with the Rainbow Auction? That must have been a meeting that I was...
We approved that one.
Okay.
That'd been 28 years. That's put in place, so...
And I would say that I'm going to vote for the approval with the spirit, so I'll be voting no on this initial motion here, because of the fact that the art museum has in the fact been allowed to do this, and we haven't had any issues with the art museum.
I wanted to add that, we've had absolutely no issues, no concerns, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do likewise, for the same reason. They have been doing it with great, you know, concern, and, I mean, care, and I think they've done a great job. I've gone most years.
What happened?
I guess I drank spirits.
Any other commissioners? Ms. Haner, did you want to say anymore, or address the commission at all?
I appreciate...
If you do, I need for you to step up to the mic, please, and give your name and address.
Judy Haner, 1499 Buys Road. I appreciate the conversation. I guess I do want to just stress that these are the three events that we use to raise funds. The museum raises most of its money each year through these three events, and so I would really urge you to support the museum. Times are tough in terms of funding this institution, so I would appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. In fairness to Commissioner Spataro, who was trying to make us uphold, basically, what we've said we were going to do, and I think we have done it, other than the fact that the ones have been there, and I appreciate that, but I would also let you know that there are plenty of businesses out there that go through the proper requirements of running a business that face the same things, and that's why we take a look at the competitive areas that are there, just so that you and the other folks understand. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. The motion is to approve it without the liquor.
No spirits.
Or spirits.
Yes. Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
No.
Commissioner Wieringel?
No.
Commissioner Wasneski?
No.
Commissioner Carter?
No.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
No.
Commissioner Shepard?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
Motion to approve application for liquor license request for the Muskegon Museum with the special liquor license for beer, wine, and spirit consumption.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve the application for a special liquor license for the Muskegon Museum of Art, which includes spirits along with beer and wine for three events: April 29, June 11, and November 18 of 2011. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. So we may begin debate, I would move that we approve the request from Consumers Energy for the easements as described.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to approve the request from Consumers Energy for easements as presented.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe we had a discussion yesterday, I don't know if you've had, if you've had a chance to think about it, and if you have additional questions. I'm sure Consumer Energy is here and available to answer any additional questions you may have. The main reason behind asking if this could be pulled out of the consent is to make sure that if you decide to approve it, that you would make the approval conditional upon staff's review, along with the attorney's review of the easement document, before we bring it back to the mayor and clerk for signatures.
Commissioner Stan, come on.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the motion to include the requirement for staff review, and what was the other piece?
The signature.
Attorney. Attorney. Oh, staff and attorney review and approve.
I second the amendment, that right?
Okay. Any other discussion? Any questions, based on the discussion we had last night? Okay. The motion is to approve the request for Consumers Energy easements as presented, with the condition that the staff and the attorney review and approve before the mayor and the city clerk sign. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we have to vote on the underlying motion?
Oh, that's right. I think you amended it.
Thought you amended the motion.
Oh, well, I'll defer to our parliamentarian.
Well, good.
For amending the motion.
Thank you.
Public hearing, item A, please.
Request to repeal existing historic preservation ordinance, planning and economic development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to repeal Chapter 38, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Muskegon. The ordinance will be replaced with an updated version. Staff recommendation: To appeal the existing ordinance. Committee recommendation: The historic district commission recommended to repeal the current ordinance at their February 1 meeting.
Commissioner Carter?
Move to approve the request to repeal the existing historic preservation ordinance.
Public hearing first.
It's a public hearing, so we have...
Oh, that's...
Oh.
It's a public hearing.
So I thought you had a comment.
No, I thought I was making a moment.
Commissioner, any questions of staff, or, is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item? Commissioner Carter?
Motion to approve the request to repeal the existing historic preservation ordinance.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Carter to approve the request to repeal the existing historic preservation ordinance and close the public hearing. And it was supported by Commissioner Spataro. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Request to amend Chapter 38, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances, Historic District Ordinance, Planning Economic Development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Chapter 38, Article 3 of the City Code of Ordinances, to approve a new historic preservation ordinance. The new ordinance will meet the state of Michigan Historic Preservation Office standards and make Muskegon Historic District residents eligible for historic building restoration tax credits. Staff recommendation: To approve the proposed ordinance. Committee recommendation: The historic district commission recommended to approve the new historic district ordinance at their February 1 meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the request to amend Chapter 38, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances, Historic District Ordinance.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to close the public hearing and approve the request to amend Chapter 38, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances, Historic District Ordinance. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C, please.
Amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, Medical Marijuana Regulation and License, Planning and Economic Development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Chapter 34, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances, to regulate and license certain aspects of medical marijuana cultivation, uses, and distribution. Staff recommendation: To approve the ordinance amendment.
All right. Staff, or commissioners, we discussed this at length last night, is there any further discussion amongst ourselves, or for staff? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item?
There's somebody in the back, way in the back.
Need for you to step forward and give your name and address, please.
My name's David Keenan, 4255 Squaw Creek Trail, Muskegon, Michigan, 49442. Just curious, that the people of Muskegon and the commission has allowed this to become a medical necessity for certain people in their certain conditions, and yet they're treating the treatment, whereas you would go to a doctor who's in Hackley Hospital for treatment for a certain pain, and he prescribes a certain medication. Under this ordinance, it's not any different, and yet, the people that would be prescribing or to let you obtain what you need for your pain, you would have to go to the outskirts of the city, to some zoning ordinance that's recommended to be industrial, like where you get cement, not a medical facility. I just, I don't understand the reasoning there. I've been disabled for eight years myself.
Well, the reason that I think it was recommended by staff was, this is something new for everyone in the state of Michigan, and to be perfectly frank with you, I don't think any of us really knows what lies ahead, or what's there, but we're trying to accommodate for those that are in the process of being the caregivers, and also for those that need to have care. I would remind you, there are plenty of communities across the state of Michigan that haven't acted, or have decided not to do anything in regards to this. We're trying to move forward in a fair way to those that are in need, and also for the rest of the community. So at this point in time, the recommendation that was made by staff, confirmed by the Planning Commission, and is now before this body, is for it to be in an I-2 zone, which, if need be, there certainly are, there's availability in the I-2 zones. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission?
Jared Foster, 10954 Mountain Ash Avenue Northwest, Grand Rapids. The people of Michigan, when they initiated this act, didn't just give patients the compassionate right to use medical marijuana. The first declaration of this act was to declare that the federal government is wrong, that medical marijuana is a valid medical treatment, that our government has perpetrated this as an evil drug for too long, and there is no reason to continue with their farce. With this state and with this commission, I appreciate that you have taken the time to recognize us, patients, and our needs, but we do ask that there be some leniency into where we can acquire our medications. It is a necessity. Patients who are from out of state, from registered states, or other states who have medical marijuana programs, if they're registered, they can come here and enjoy our benefits under our act. Without a public venue, they have no place to acquire medication and seek relief while they're here. That can really hurt our tourism in a lot of different ways. You have the patients who this act was really initiated for, which is the extremely sick and dying, they don't have time for a caregiver to grow plants for them. They don't have time to go through a lengthy process. They need medication to take their relief, so that they can have their relief in their end of days. It takes secondary conditions, such as severe pain, chronic nausea, epilepsy, things that aren't necessarily life-threatening, in order to keep those kind of supplies around for the people who this law was initially made for. It's why there's a primary condition that qualifies, and secondary conditions that qualify under the law. We just ask that, you know, there was no consideration made for facilities that weren't going to grow. You know, they considered the I-2 districts because of the greenhouse necessity. Most of these facilities won't even be growing on site. It's a risk, and like you said, it's very difficult to grow industrially inside. I think that this country is moving towards the ability to do this agriculturally in the future, which would make things easier and cheaper for everybody, and that you guys are definitely doing us all a favor by moving in the right direction to accept this. Thank you.
Thank you. Go.
My name is Kevin Westrom. I'm an attorney, consoling with the Greater Michigan Compassion Club, and I just want to address a couple of specific points with respect to some of the discussion yesterday. The intent, or the threads I'm seeing here of what the city's trying to do would be, as mentioned in the Chronicle article of yesterday, for one thing, to keep marijuana businesses from concentrating in certain areas of the city, and yet, later in the article, it also refers to the idea of trying to protect the welfare of the citizens and to keep the marijuana businesses restricted to the I-2 industrial zones. I think there's a certain contradiction between that. I think if you're going to say they've got to be in the I-2 zones, then clearly, you are concentrating them in areas of the city, which I gathered was one of the things we were trying to strive against. But specifically, one of the issues mentioned yesterday was electrical, and I think one of the rationale given by the staff was that in an I-2 zone, there is sufficient electrical, and the assumption being that someone who's a caregiver is going to have a lot of electrical needs to grow the plants. Now, I have been handed a photograph from Mr. Antle's home. He is in a situation where there is a caregiver with 80...
We're allowed, she's allowed 84 between everybody, between, with herself being a patient, her being a patient, her five caregivers.
All right. So 84 plants.
Patients, right.
And my understanding, this is a 1910-era house?
Built in 1910.
All right, and there is a 100 amp breaker?
100 amp break.
And that is not custom, or modified, or anything? That's just what the house came with, right?
Right.
And it is entirely sufficient to grow those plants?
Correct.
All right. So I just wanted to raise that point, because if the assumption is that these caregivers need to be in these industrial zones due to electrical requirements, I think that's a faulty assumption, and I think also, if you do that, the I-2 zones are so restricted that you're going to be concentrating the caregivers, and you're going to then perhaps bring about related criminal activity in a more concentrated way, which I had gathered is one of the things the city is trying not to do. That is all I wanted to address.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Yep.
I think there may be a misunderstanding. When we're talking about concentration, the part of the ordinance that addresses that was to disallow the, I guess, condominiumization of facilities, where you have pods, if you will, in one building, and while they are separately licensed and fit, the state... will, in one building, and while they are separately licensed and fit the state referendum, in that effect is you have a much larger operation in a single building. And when we talked about avoiding concentration, that's the part of the ordinance that speaks to that. Placing it in the industrial zone is consistent with the greenhouse use. So those were two separate issues, and it's unfortunate that created some confusion in the discussion last night.
If I could ask Commissioner Spataro a question. Consistent with the greenhouse use, what does that mean?
Well, there are other greenhouses in the city. We, our building inspectors, know what it takes to operate them, and that's reflected in the language in the ordinance.
All right. But again, the latter point I was raising is that I think that is a bit of a fallacy. I don't believe, in a situation such as what Mr. Antol has described, you have 84 plants that are growing sufficiently in a 1910-era home with a 100-amp breaker, or, yeah, 100-amp breaker. I don't believe there is this greenhouse level need for electricity, and I think that is a misnomer or a fallacy about the idea of the quote-unquote "greenhouse" effect. And I believe that if you concentrate these into the I-2 zones, I don't believe you're achieving any avoiding of the greenhouse problem in other eras, because, other areas, rather, because I don't believe these homes require that much electricity in an undue fashion.
Derek Antol, 1504 Montgomery, Executive Director, Greater Michigan Compassion Club. Just to kind of reiterate what he said and elaborate on it a bit. I had a chance today to look into the I-2, and there's only so much area available to begin with, and I don't see that as being nearly enough to necessitate the number of caregivers in this community. And again, going off of what he said, that would, the way the law is set up right now, there is a reference in the law where, you know, there's confidentiality clauses. Right now, there's no way even for police to determine who is a caregiver and where they reside, where they're growing. That is, you know, between the state, that it's in there with the state records, and that's as far as it needs to go. Now, in directing this, and again, making it public to the community that this is where the caregivers are growing, that ultimately lets everybody know where it's at. I mean, you've got to think about 15, 16-year-old kids, you've got to think about outside criminal activity. It's just going to give eyes to where everything is going on. Whereas right now, it's, I mean, this is something that's been going on since before prohibition. People grow, people use, and they keep it low-key. Just because it's legal now does not mean everybody's going to tell everybody and their neighbors that, hey, we're growing now. It's still something people like to keep safe and secure. They don't want the word to get out. They don't want any break-ins. They don't want any trouble. I just personally, I don't see that working, and people are just going to break the law because they're not going to feel comfortable leaving all that investment in an area where they're not going to be overnight while they're sleeping. I would wholeheartedly support the idea of what Commissioner Spataro was speaking of with what we call collaborative grow, where two or more caregivers come together. I don't see it being a safe environment for such an activity where, let's say, three or four caregivers want to get together and just go pick out a house in some random neighborhood and utilize that residence specifically for a grow operation. That, I would completely agree with you. That should be something that should be sanctioned off as an I-2 zone, if you're getting more than one person. But then again, you also have to keep in mind that that's going to violate the federal regulations once you cross that 100-plant limit. That's, now you're treading federal-wise. The state has allowed us 12 plants per patient, a caregiver with five patients, 60 plants if they're patients themselves, 72. Most households, like you say, our home came with a 100-amp breaker. It's been there since it was built. I had two electricians come in to verify that we weren't going to need any upgrades, that we weren't going to have to go have the inspector come in and do the upgrade, and have the electric company come and shut everything off, and go through that whole process. I mean, it's, 72 plants is not as much as it may seem just by the number, and there's not nearly as much coming off of those plants as one might think. The cycle that she is on for her patients right now is like nine plants every two weeks. That involves seven people. That's roughly one plant per patient over two-week period. That's just enough to necessitate their needs with very little overage. I just, I see it bringing a lot of problems if you, say, a caregiver can only grow, and maybe it was a misunderstanding last night if that be the case, and I apologize. What I gathered last night from your speakings was that if you're a patient, you could grow without any special permits and without having to go into an I-2 zone, and if you're a caregiver with one or more patients, you would have to acquire that permit and then move your operation into an I-2 zone. So if that wasn't the case, I mean, that's what I had collected from the speakings last night, was that a patient would be okay in their home, but a caregiver would not.
Is there anyone else? Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the amendment to the City Code of Ordinances Regarding Medical Marijuana Regulation and Licensing.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Carter, to close the public hearing and approve the amendment to the City Code of Ordinances Medical Marijuana Regulation and Licensing. Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I will be voting in favor of this. We had a very lengthy discussion. We've had discussions at other work sessions over the last nine months. Our attorney and our staff have done a lot of research to show that this is, to the best of our ability, consistent with the language of the referendum that was passed, and we have to deal with the language of that referendum regardless of what intent or interpretation is. We have to deal with the words that were on the statute. And I wanted to say, and I want to make sure, because I've heard some things yesterday and today that are concerning to me. This allows for this use as described in these zones, and the last speaker was absolutely correct. If you are a patient and following the referendum and this regulation, if you have up to 12 plants in your home, that's okay. If you are growing for anyone else, you have to be licensed, you have to be in an industrial zone. We would never allow an intensive commercial use to be operated out of a family home. That has come up time and again in single-family residential districts. That has nothing to do with the nature of the activity in question. That has to do with maintaining stable neighborhoods where people want to go home and rest and enjoy the comfort of their own home in peace and quiet. And it doesn't matter if your neighbors run in a beauty salon, or run in a greenhouse out of the basement regardless of what they're growing, or a backyard auto mechanic business. Certain businesses reach a point where they have a negative impact on a residential neighborhood, and I don't foresee any change in this coming up that would allow for commercial development in an R1 zone, period. So I just wanted to come straight out with that, so there's no mistaking. And it's got nothing to do with the nature of what we're talking about. It has to do with the fact that we're talking about a commercial activity. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Carter?
I totally agree with Commissioner Spataro on the fact that I, too, would not like commercial businesses in a residential neighborhood, and that's, again, as he stated, has nothing to do with the nature of this particular business. It has just the nature of any business, being in a residential neighborhood. I do have a question. The, now, a caregiver doesn't have to grow, right?
No.
Okay. My question, thank you. My question would be, if they're not growing and just being a caregiver, are they allowed, do they have to be in our...
I-2.
I-2, yeah. Do they have to be in just, if they're not a grower but a caregiver, they still have to be in that zone?
That are still dispensing, et cetera, under...
Just dispensing, not growing.
Under our, under the proposed ordinance, they would, the caregiver, even though not growing their own, provide, would be in an I-2.
Okay. You know, this ordinance is not perfect. This is a starting point. If down the road, we may need to tweak it here or there, you know, we may look at that down the road. But as of now, I mean, this is what we need to start with. We, I mean, as stated by the mayor earlier, there are some communities who just decided, no, period. Okay? We are abiding by the law. We are allowing it to, these facilities to happen. As caregivers and patients, you've also got to learn to be patient with us. This is totally new to us, and allow us to do what we feel is a necessary start to make regulations for this law, to be on the books. It is not perfect, but it is a starting point, and you've got to give us a chance. Thank you.
Anyone else? The public hearing is closed, so, anyone else here? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
No.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, as I think Commissioner Carter indicated, this is something that's new to everyone. We will, as a Commission, be open-minded as things move along, so bear with us. It's new to you to be going down this track, whether you've been a caregiver for the last 15 years, or you've been a patient for the last 15 years. There is a law now that's out there, so we're trying to abide by it. We understand, but we also are here to protect the community in a sort, and certainly there are a lot of folks that will have a lot of questions about this once it's in the paper and it's passed. So it's like a lot of things that become new and change. It takes a little while for people to adapt and communities to adapt. So we appreciate your patience, and to the patients, we're glad that you're legally getting some relief now, so, thank you. Okay. And the city manager reminded me, we'll be having a second reading on both ordinances, so that would be at the next meeting.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
With this ordinance going in, let's say if a company kicks in my door, they violate the ordinance, they remove plants from home, we, of course, appeal it, take it up through the central, if the state court would ever have it. Section 4B of the law simply states that up to the 60 or 72 plants be grown in a closed lot facility. That's all the law states. Now, with your ordinance going in, and we get violated for that, then we take that up through the ranks, if you will, and they reference that to Section 7E of the law that states any acts apart from other acts that consist of, since acting on five portions of marijuana as required by the state law. When we give that to the state court, if they rule that, who gives it up to taxpayers who are going to be covering the prosecution expenses?
There'll probably be a lot of questions, and the courts will be answering on this as it goes, and, yeah, but this isn't the only subject that this happens to, so. Item D, please.
Recommendation for annual renewal of liquor licenses, City Clerk. Summary of requests. To adopt a resolution recommending non-renewal of those liquor license establishments who are in violation of Section 50146 and 50147 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Muskegon. These establishments have been found to be in non-compliance with the City Code of Ordinances, and renewal of their liquor license should not be recommended by the City Commission. If any of these establishments come into compliance by March 22, 2011, they will be removed from this resolution. Recommendation for the renewal will be forwarded to Liquor Control Commission. Staff recommendation, adoption of the resolution.
Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we adopt the resolution with the revised list that was presented to us at the meeting, seeing as it's a lot shorter than what we had in our packet from yesterday.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the recommendation for the annual renewal of liquor licenses as presented. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address this item?
Yes.
Oh, this was a public hearing, too?
Yep.
Oh, my bad.
Hello?
You heard...
Jennifer Osborne.
You and me, brother.
3125 Tool Street Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan. And in regards to CJ's on the Beach, formerly Captain Jack's, I have had conversations with Ken Grant, working on getting our discrepancies taken care of, and I would ask that you recommend that our liquor license be renewed. We are working on getting everything caught back up, and I ask if you have any questions about that.
So nothing, you haven't completed the...
Correct. I have not been removed from the list. I still have a few issues that I'm working out with him to get corrected, but I ask that you recommend that our liquor license be renewed.
Well, traditionally, we haven't moved forward without them being done, and you still have some time to put this together, so.
She'll be okay.
I think if...
I just want to reassure you that we are moving forward.
Okay, well, good. We're glad to hear that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address this item? And I believe, Commissioner Carter?
It's a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you... Motion to approve the recommendation for the annual renewal of liquor licenses and close the public hearing.
I'll suck at that. It's been, we already did this, but it's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation as presented for the annual renewal of liquor licenses. Any discussion? Commissioner Wasowski?
I'll pass.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, item A, please.
Second reading amendment to the zoning ordinance, outdoor lighting, planning economic development. Summary of requests. Staff initiated request to amend Section 2331 landscaping, fencing, walls, screens, and lighting of Article 23 general provisions of the zoning ordinance to modify the guidelines on outdoor lighting. Staff recommendation to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request at their February 10th meeting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance affecting outdoor lighting.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galron, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the second reading of the amendment to the zoning ordinance for outdoor lighting. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Second reading, rezoning requests for the property located at 1221 West Lakeston Avenue, planning economic development. Summary of requests. Staff initiated request to rezone the property at 1221 West Lakeston Avenue from RM2 medium-density multiple-family residential district to R1 single-family residential district. Staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request at their February 10th meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the rezoning request for the property located at 1221 West Lakeston from RM2 to R1.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Galron, to approve the rezoning request for the property at 1221 West Lakeston Avenue from RM2 to R1. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
No.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Five-year consolidated plan, community and neighborhood services. Summary of requests. To allow CNS staff to publish a summary of the 2011-2016 City of Muskegon five-year consolidated plan for citizen review for not less than 30 days. A public notice will solicit comments on our proposed plan. Staff recommendation, we are requesting to direct the CNS office to publish a summary of the 2011-2016 City of Muskegon five-year consolidated plan.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we direct the CNS office to publish a summary of the 2011-2016 City of Muskegon five-year consolidated plan.
Support. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galron, supported by Commissioner Carter, to have the CNS staff publish a summary of the 2011-2016 City of Muskegon five-year consolidated plan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galron?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmenton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the commission? Please, I need for you to give your name and address, please.
Janeele Johnson. My address is 1232 Sanford Street, Muskegon, Michigan. I just want to thank the Commissioner Lawrence for allowing me to come in and speak and state my complaint. I'm having issues with my landlord fixing some repairs in my house. I did contact Dan, who works in the codes department, and he was working with us to get my landlord, Pete Watts, to come in and fix the repairs. On January 24th, I called the gas company out because something was going on with the furnace. Myself and my daughters were sick for a long time with allergies, coughing, so I'm thinking something was wrong with the furnace. So they come out and they look. It wasn't a filter. And we had been, we moved in September 2010, and I was wondering, you know, how could this place get approved? I was approved for Section 8, so it was an inspector who came out, and from my understanding that they inspect the hot water heater and the furnace, I couldn't understand how could this be? So I called Pete, my landlord, and he didn't call me back. So I got in contact with the inspection department, who I talked to, Dan, and Pete, he sent Pete a letter, I guess he received it January 26th, and then that's when he called me back. He came out and replaced the filter. He was supposed to come back January 29th, that Saturday. He signed, we signed a work form where he had to show that he replaced the filter and to show when he was supposed to come out. He never showed. I called, he never answered. So I didn't receive anything from Pete until February 6 at 1:35. He wanted to come out and do some repairs. Unfortunately, we was out of town, my family and I. So I told him if he can come that Monday morning, if he could, he can come in, and he said that he would. Now, he has a master key to the lock, so I didn't understand why he just couldn't come in and do the repairs. Well, he, from my understanding, when I talked to Dan last Friday, he said that he was dismissing the case because I wasn't there Friday for Pete to do the repairs. And I didn't understand why Pete couldn't come in with the key and do the repair. I just, I didn't get that. And when I told Dan that, I said, well, I talked to Pete around 8:40 something, maybe 8:55, and told him I had to run to my daughter's school to give her her asthma pump and her glasses, because she had left them at home, and that I was leaving the back door open. Well, I guess Pete got to the house, and then he came to Dan's office, left my house, came to Dan's office, and brought Dan back to my house. He never told him that he had spoken with me on the phone. He only showed him a message, a text message he had sent me, and I guess he was making it look like I wouldn't call him back. I don't know what's going on with this guy. So Dan, I guess he got frustrated and was like that he dismissed the case. What I'm asking the city commissioners to do is support me and put pressure on this inspector so this landlord can come out and do these repairs. He's getting federal money for the rent. So I don't understand. I mean, I didn't get frustrated. I don't know what else to do.
When I took the phone call, I did contact staff, and the management wanted to address that. And I'll be upfront, there is some element of he said, she said, to some of what staff are hearing from the landlord as opposed to what we're hearing from Ms. Johnson. But to me, the overriding concern is there are identified violations to this rental property that have not been addressed according to the person who lives there. And regardless, I'm concerned that, you know, to me, that's just unacceptable. You know, if we have documented violations, I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure the safety of the residents, to make sure that those violations are corrected before a case is closed. So I just want to leave it at that. That was my concern. I appreciate Ms. Johnson stepping forward with her concerns and sharing them with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think it's important to note, with respect to the alleged violations to the house, is that the city has not verified those violations. What we do in cases like this where we have a complaint from a tenant is we send a notice to the landlord that there has been this complaint and ask him to repair what we know or what has been told to us at that point. We do not go out and do an inspection of those at that time. And my understanding is that's what's happened in this case, sent the notice. And as Commissioner Spataro said, I think there's been different viewpoints on what has or hasn't happened in this case. But as I understand it, you know, we spent a fair amount of time on this case since the time Ms. Johnson mentioned, I think it was late January...
January 26.
Yeah, right. And, you know, I have a chronology of events from the standpoint of what we have done, and it dates back to January 26 and goes through yesterday, March 7. So there's been contact with both the landlord and the tenant. Clearly, there's a tenant landlord dispute here, and what happens in many cases, I think has happened to some degree in this case, is we've been drawn into this. We want to make sure that any defect is corrected. It's our understanding that at least the furnace filter has been replaced. We're not aware of whether or not some of the other three items, as I understand, have been corrected or not as of this point. As Commissioner Spataro said, we were wanting from the landlord, we heard something different from the tenant. We're still in the process of trying to get this issue resolved.
Commissioner Carter?
When was the last time a rental inspection was done on this property?
It was in June of 2009. I'm sorry.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't check that. I don't know.
I think it's required every two...
Four years.
Four years. Every four years?
Four.
Every four years?
Four years.
In a case where we've got, in a complaint from a tenant, does it, so it doesn't necessarily... We don't have to go in and do an inspection?
Right.
Okay? A real inspection as part of the complaint?
And I'll tell you, part of the reason I'm not aware that it's happened in this case, but many times there's a tenant landlord dispute, and sometimes it involves a potential eviction, and then the tenant complains about conditions of the house and, or the apartment or house, whatever, and then we get drawn into that and into a court situation. So what we use as the method right now, as I described earlier, and it seems to work quite well.
I guess where does it stand right now?
Where's this situation standing right now? What had occurred is that the, as I understand it, the landlord was claiming that they couldn't gain access to the house, and I think Ms. Johnson verified that, although she has a different point of view on what could have occurred there. And as it stands now, we were sending another communication to the landlord saying that these things need to be corrected.
Okay.
Could I ask something?
Yep.
I made the complaint, so obviously I want things fixed in the house, or I wouldn't have ever made the complaint. Pete has a master key to get into the house. The agreement was that he would let me, give me a notice, just like if you rent a house at, rent an apartment, at an apartment complex, they give you a notice when you come, and they come in and fix the repairs. He did not show up when he was supposed to, January 29th. So, I mean, it seemed like it's falling on me.
Ms. Johnson, do you have the copy of that notice that he gave you for January 29th?
He was supposed to bring it, January 29th.
But he didn't bring it?
Didn't bring it.
So you don't have it?
And didn't call. And the only time, I mean, it was things that was going on before I even contacted the city inspection, where my father and my fiancee made repairs to the house, and he was supposed to reimburse me and never did. I have a big hole like this up under my kitchen sink. It was there when I moved in. I didn't even know it was there until I put things up under the cabinet, and I'm like, well, how did this get approved? So, I mean, and then Dan told me on the phone when I last spoke to him, well, you two settle it out. I have texted him, called him. He has not responded. To me, he's lazy, very lazy.
Just to be clear, you're talking about the landlord or...
The landlord, not Dan.
Thank you.
The landlord.
You know, we don't get in the middle of landlord tenant disputes. We're there, we're only here to facilitate, to make sure you have a safe living environment. Anything like the hole and all this stuff, that's, I mean, we feel for you, but that's between you and the landlord. What our major concern is that you're living in a house that's safe. That's our only concern. And if there's issues with the house that don't make it safe, that's where we come involved to help move the landlord on. But as far as any other disputes, you know, we may feel for you, but we, it's not our responsibility to get in between landlord and tenant disputes. Our only concern is that you have, the house is up to code, and you're living in a house that's up to code, and it's a safe environment for you and your family.
It's not up to code.
Okay. Well, then, again, I think, like you said, we have sent another letter to the landlord to address these issues through the inspections. You know, when that was?
When did you send the letter? It was, the notice, note I had was that we were sending a letter, and that was, that notation was yesterday.
Okay. So we're sending him another letter, and then this, that'll help move him along. So that's as far as we can take it. We're not into the civil part of it.
Right, right.
That's a civil matter, which we don't want to get into, otherwise we'd be in every matter on the whole city.
Right.
And that's not what we're here for.
Okay.
So we are trying to help you by sending another letter.
Okay.
So you should probably be getting in contact, your landlord probably should be contacting you shortly.
Okay. Well, thank you, and you guys and ladies have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission?
Yes.
I need your name and the...
Charles Thomas, and I'm at 1123 Spring Street. I'm her father. I'd just like to elaborate a little bit. I retired from Mishkind. I'd elaborate a little bit on the filter thing. Doesn't sound like it's a great thing, but she has three children under the age of six. They have chronic asthma. Her oldest daughter has been hospitalized three times in Grand Rapids because of her breathing condition, and that is a safety issue. There was another issue in the backyard. He has poison ivory growing in the backyard. When he was notified of this, he went and bought a little can of spray, you know, and he sprayed the plants, and that was his idea of taking care of this. I mean, you know, I don't think that was appropriate at all. I'm not trying to browbeat anybody, anything like that. It's a nice place, but there's certain safety things that need to be taken care of for her to dwell here, you know? So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission? Commissioner Carter?
Seeing no one, motion to adjourn.
All favor?
And it's not a public hearing.
Is that still a public hearing?